Testing stage left. Director's chair. Stage right.
Right, Secretary Friedlander is trying to get on. It's two thirty-five in the afternoon on September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three. This is a special call meeting of Kentucky opioid abatement advisory commission and I will begin with the call of the row. State Treasurer Allison Ball or her representative or chief of staff is Lauren Ferguson.
President, thank you. Chair Hubbard.
Thank you. Representative Danny Bentley. Mr. Vic Brown, present. Ms. Karen Butcher.
Here.
Mr. Carlos Cameron, here. Dr. Patricia Freeman. CHFS Secretary Eric Friedlander or his designate, Dr. Alan Brenzel. Mr. Van Ingram.
Here.
Ms. Von Purdy.
Present.
Dr. Jason Root.
Here.
Our business meeting schedule is October seventeen, two thousand and twenty-three. November fourteen, two thousand and twenty-three, and December twelve, two thousand and twenty-three. All of these meetings will take place at one P M. at ten twenty-four Capital Center Drive, Kentucky four zero six zero one, suite two hundred. And now we come to the third item on the agenda, which is the approval of applications for funding. Before we begin the process of entertaining motions and votes on each of the applicants that will be referenced in a de-identified way by number. I would like to ask our subcommittee chairs to make an affirmation on the record. As we know, K R S fifteen point two nine one contains all of the necessary legal rules related to the use of these funds. That statute translates almost in exactitude the terms of the master settlement agreements that dictate the use of this money. And as we know, the statutory language requires us to expend money for the abatement of opioid use disorder and/or any co-occurring substance use disorder or mental health issue. Again, money must be used for the abatement of opioid use disorder, any co-occurring substance use disorder, or mental health issue. Subcommittee Chair Ingram, are you able to affirm that the applications reviewed by your committee expend money for treatment of opioid use disorder, any co-occurring substance use disorder, or mental health issue?
I confirm that.
Thank you, sir.
Of the ones that we've submitted here for approval.
Thank you. So the applications that we are about to review for approval all meet that threshold?
Yes, sir.
Chairwoman Purdy, you chair the prevention committee and have reviewed several of these applications that we are going to entertain motions to approve for expenditure. Can you affirm that each applicant for which funds will be considered and voted upon today or will be delivering services assuming approval for treatment of opioid use disorder, any co-occurring substance use disorder, or mental health issue?
I can confirm.
All right, that is confirmed.
Right, Secretary Friedlander is starting to get on.
All right, we will take a brief intermission before we begin voting for Secretary Friedlander to appear by saying. Thank you.
There he is.
Sorry. That's okay. We're now ready to proceed. We begin with application number two oh eight with a recommended funding of three hundred thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve applicant number two oh eight for three hundred thousand dollars?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Staff has just advised me that we will be referring to the numbers that are listed on the agenda before me. I'm assuming that every commission member also has those numbers. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right.
Yes.
Grantee on numeric number two. Is there a motion that that grantee be approved for an award of a hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved. Number three on your agenda is there a motion that the proposed grantee be approved for an award of two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Numeric number four on your agenda. The recommendation is four thousand dollars. Is there a motion that this potential grantee be awarded four thousand dollars?
I make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Applicant number five on your agenda. Is there a motion that this applicant be approved for a grant of twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars and fourteen cents?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Applicant number six has been recommended for a grant award of six hundred thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve that grant award?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, applicant number seven. It is recommended that this applicant be awarded a grant of a hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Is there It is recommended that this applicant be awarded a grant of a hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Applicant number eight, it is recommended that this applicant receive an award of six hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
I move that with that recommendation.
I'll second Karen.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Applicant number nine has been recommended for a grant of one million dollars. Is there a motion that that recommendation be approved?
I move that we approve that recommendation.
Is there a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Applicant number ten. It is recommended that this applicant receive a grant of five hundred thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Applicant number eleven, it is recommended that this applicant be approved for a grant of five hundred thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
So.
Is there a second?
I think.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Applicant number twelve, it is recommended that this applicant receive a grant award of five hundred thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Applicant number thirteen is recommended for an award of five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Applicant number fourteen is recommended for an award of three hundred thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Advocate number fifteen. It is recommended that this applicant receive an award of five hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve that award.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Applicant number sixteen. It is recommended that this applicant receive a grant award of five hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Applicant number sixteen is recommended for a grant award of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Number seventeen.
Number seventeen. Let me correct. Applicant number seventeen has been recommended for an award of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
I make that motion.
That's fine.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right.
Any opposed? All right. Applicant number eighteen is recommended for a grant award of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Please signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Applicant number nineteen is recommended for an award of one million dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve that award.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Applicant number twenty is recommended for an award of ninety-three thousand, nine hundred dollars, forty-two cents. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Applicant number twenty-one is recommended for an award of forty-five thousand, two hundred dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
So.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Applicant number twenty-two is recommended for an award of two hundred thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yes, I'll say.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Applicant number twenty-three is recommended for an award of one million dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Applicant number twenty-four is recommended for an award of three hundred and twenty thousand, ninety-eight dollars and thirty-six cents. Is there a motion to approve?
I make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Applicant number twenty-five is recommended for an award of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
I move we approve that award.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
applicant number twenty-six is recommended for an award of five hundred thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Applicant number twenty-seven is recommended for an award of three hundred thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
applicant number twenty-eight is recommended for a grant award of two hundred and five thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
I move we approve that award.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Applicant number twenty-nine is recommended for an award of a hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Applicant number thirty is recommended for an award of four hundred thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Applicant number thirty-one is recommended for an award of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Applicant number thirty-two is recommended for an award of three hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-seven cents. Is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve that award.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Applicant number thirty-three is recommended for an award of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And finally. Applicant number thirty-four is recommended for a grant of three hundred and seventy-six thousand, fifty dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve that award.
And I'll second.
Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Right. Please ask Ms. Ferguson to clarify her vote on applicant number eight.
Ms. Ferguson, Ms. Shavies has asked if you could clarify your vote on applicant number eight. And that was the application recommendation for six hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars.
All of, all of my votes have been yes.
All right. And Ms. Shavies, Ms. Telfair, by my count, every one of these votes were unanimous yeses.
That's great.
You can confirm that.
Yes, great.
All right. Colleagues. Thank you all very, very much for the great, tremendous work that you have done, for the hours that you have spent talking and deliberating and respectfully debating the merits of these applications with each other over time. These things could have peaks and valleys, but this is a peak moment. And I would like to thank each of you for the tremendous public service that you have given the Commonwealth of Kentucky by virtue of making these recommendations and seeing to it that we continue to build the infrastructure that is necessary to turn the generational tide on the opioid epidemic from the commission's vantage point. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Secretary Friedlander, I didn't hear an aye out of you for adjournment.
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you all very much. Have a wonderful week.